Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is Monday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven o'clock. I'd like to take this time to recognize Lieutenant John Leonard. As you retire after twenty-three years of service to the city of Buchanan, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks for your dedication to the Buchanan Police Department in keeping our community safe. Your commitment and hard work have been instrumental in ensuring our town's security and well-being. Your professionalism and integrity have set a high standard for all, and your presence will be greatly missed. Congratulations on your retirement, and best wishes for fulfilling and relaxing new chapter ahead. Thank you for your service and the positive impact you've had on our community.
We'd like to congratulate John on his... We kind of joke around, he's saying retirement, we're kicking him out, but... Or he's quitting, whatever one you want to tell us here. Out of the officers that started with Buchanan Police Department, myself and John are kind of left as original officers, and he's done an outstanding job for the department, for the community. I know he's ready to move on to greater things. So, we're kind of having a loss, but at the same time, a celebration that he continues to do the fun stuff he wants to do on his alleged farm, or whatever, with the goats, or whatever he wants to do, and stuff like that. But we're going to miss him. I'm so proud to have served with him for his twenty-three years with Buchanan, actually thirty-six years in total with law enforcement. He can always tell you his stories about Isabella County later. But we wanted to congratulate him and thank him, and Mr. Mayor.
It's been a pleasure. Sometimes not so much, but I've learned a lot, and I enjoyed working with everybody and helping the city. Time to take care of goats. Thank you.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Dennison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Wiansky.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, I need to add a couple of things to the agenda under... I need to add an item E under the consent agenda, item seven. Consider appointing Matt Pleasant to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending in June two thousand and twenty-six. And an item F under the consent agenda. Consider allowing Mayor Sean Dennison to sign any M-dot documents pertaining to the infrastructure project in the absence of a city manager.
I object to that. I want that under discussion. I don't want that in consent. It's, you know, we don't have a city manager because of you. I don't want to give you the power to sign anything.
Let's, um...
Just put it under new business.
It's fine, let's put it under D, under new business. Can I get somebody to make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I so move.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Do we have a roll call?
Whedon.
Yes.
Wiansky.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you, okay, moving down to item six. Public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone who should make a public comment?
Good evening, my name is Monroe LaMaye. I'm from one eighteen Shermer Parkway. And I believe I owe all of you an apology, the entire public, the city commission, Chief Harvey Burnett, for my outburst last time. I'm kind of a passionate person, so I lose it once in a while, but I do apologize, and I hope that you will forgive me. This is in regards to the charges a mayor bringing up against Dan Wiansky. Right after a Sean Dennison statement to the press about being another commissioner's fault for having to having suspend the city manager, I decided to take a look at it a little bit further and talk to some of the commissioners. One of them was willing to talk to me about a timeline. So, I spoke to Dan, and I confirmed some of what Dan said, most of what Dan said, with Ben. Some of the questions that I asked was when did, date and day, did Sean receive the letter of complaint with the forty-two grievances against Ben Eldridge, the city manager, from city employees? The answer was Thursday, November second, in the evening. When did he tell you and the other commissioners? The answer was Friday, November third, at four P.M. He goes, "I don't know when he had informed Patrick and Mark, but he mentioned that he was on his way to inform Larry Money next." Did he already consult the city attorney when you had been informed? The answer was yes. When did you speak to the commissioners and voice your opposition, and when did you tell them you were going to share the document with Ben? The answer is, "I asked Sean if he talked to city manager, and he said no. There was no contact with the other commissioners, as they do not speak to me." When did you email the document to Ben? The answer is, "Late on Saturday, November fourth." And conversation with Sean and the other commissioners, was there ever a mention or talk about suspending Ben on Monday? The answer is, "Sean had a conversation with me on Friday, November fourth, that his intention was to fire the city manager." That's when Dan mentioned to him that he was going to share this document with the city manager, so he was aware of what was going to happen and had a chance to defend himself before he was fired. The mayor had plenty of time to intervene and ask the city manager to work remotely from home until the matter was investigated. He did not do that, and according to Dan, he had intentions on firing him all along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you please...
Anyone else wish to make a comment?
My name is Tom Heger. I sat in your chair for six years. I was a mayor for three years. So, I'm very aware of what you guys go through. I empathize. I don't sympathize. I have three things that I wanted to say. First, is I'd like again to congratulate John. He came in, I think he said in two thousand and twenty? Or two thousand and twenty? Which...
Two thousand.
Two thousand, that's right. And that was my last year on the commission. But I do remember when John joined us. And he's been one tremendous asset to the city. And so, I'd like to also thank you for your service very much. The second item is not as pleasant. It is pertaining to what I have heard, what I have read, as far as what's going on with the city. Perhaps a lot of you are not aware of the trials and turbulations that we went through twenty years ago, when we received a audit, which was called a going concern audit. And for you that are not public accountants, or don't know what that means, it basically means we were on the verge of bankruptcy. We had to make major decisions back then, which we did. A lot of them were not unanimous. There were a lot of contested decisions, four to one, most of them. But we had to make those decisions, and a lot of them were cutbacks in staff, cutbacks across the board in things that we did. I had half this city that hated my guts because I put this stuff forward, and the other half that loved me because they recognized we had to have fiscal responsibility. I just want you all gentlemen to please make the right decisions for the city. We're not in the financial situation that we should be in. We turned the city around back in those days and got it out of a going concern, and we were able to get the first funding and the first... Can't remember the term for them, but when we went out for federal grants. Those were the first zones we had gotten since Clark Equipment had left. And we got it. So, please just make the right decisions. You know, and if it's personality issues, that you don't like what the city manager is doing, or that you don't, you know, or you've had people who are on staff who don't like it, guess what? They didn't like what we had to do. But you got to make tough decisions to keep this city afloat. I just thank you and ask you to do that. And the last thing is in reference to Dan. Sometimes, Dan, you don't have the right way of saying things, but you have your heart in the right place. You are fiscally conservative, I like that. You and I, you know, we don't always agree, but I agree with what you're trying to do sometimes, I just don't like the way you do it. And as far as an allegation as to whether he has done something incorrectly against any rules and regulations that you guys have today, those rules were not here when I was here. The only rules we acted under were Robert's Rules of Order. So, I just ask you to please again, don't consider the source, but consider what you're doing. Because what you do to this man, if you chastise him, or if you slap his wrist, you can't get rid of him unless you do a recall. And I believe in you, I went through that too, because I had people that didn't agree with what I did. But fortunately, the good people of Buchanan that did agree with me came out and supported me, and I did not get recalled. So, all of five of you guys, thank you for your service. Again, I can empathize, and I know what it's like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Alan Robant, one fourteen East Front Street. And these are related to the next item following Dan's on the new business related to Ben Eldridge. Buchanan has a systemic problem at City Hall with staff. It appeared under Heather. It appeared again under Ben. And if you fire Ben and hire someone else, you are not addressing the problem. In March of two thousand and twenty-one, Heather memmoed her staff. The chain of command is a useful tool that is put in place to ensure that any potential issue that may need to be addressed is brought before the correct parties. Following proper chain of command also means that concerns or issues should not be brought directly to elected officials or members of the public unless you've also shared those same concerns with your direct supervisor and the city manager. Following proper chain of command means that concerns or issues should not be brought to elected officials or members of the public until after you have fully followed the chain of command. She also identified a problem of commissioners interacting with staff in March of two thousand and twenty-one. Since it is the city manager's job to serve as the liaison between city staff and the city commissioners, it is vitally important for the city manager to be aware of any interactions between city staff and city commissioners. I'm requesting that any city staff who have interacted with city commissioners please forward the city manager or commission interaction report. This commissioner interaction report should include statement of date, time, and location of the interaction, as well as summary of any topics discussed that involve city business. I've received indications that this type of undocumented communication is already causing problems in various departments. There was another memo in two thousand and twenty-one, employee incident policy. The purpose of the employee incident policy is to define the proper procedure for reviewing any potential violations of the city's employee handbook and/or related policies. It is understood that employees will follow the supervisory hierarchy in their respective department. This means that an employee will submit a complaint or concern to their immediate supervisor for review and response. The employee will submit the complaint or concern using an employee incident form. The supervisor will review the incident form and provide a response to the employee within seven business days. Only in extenuating circumstances will an employee circumvent the chain of command. Falsifying information either verbally or in writing, it is imperative that accurate and truthful information is given by all employees. Any employee that falsifies information either verbally or in writing will be subject to discipline up to and including termination. No tolerance will be given under respect to lying. Then there are memos on insubordination. And basically, what's going on here, as a friend of mine said, the inmates are running the asylum, and that is the problem at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else wish to make a public comment?
I'm Carla Jackson Johnson, and I've been here for a year begging you to stop spending. And I'm not feeling like I want to be very nice about it anymore. If you fire Ben Eldridge, Buchanan will be radioactive. Do you know that? No one will want to come and work as city manager after you've taken a good man with an impeccable record and character assassinated him. Ben Eldridge came here and immediately started to do what I'm told has to be done when a city is in danger of being taken over by the state. You do what the state will do when they come in to take over. You dissolve unnecessary positions. You fire half the staff. You not only cancel Thrill on the Hill and twenty-seven thousand dollar picnic tables, but you start liquidating parks. Not only the picnic tables will be sold, but the land itself. Do you intend to neuter, destroy, and fire a city manager who's doing what needs to be done? Do you really think anyone is going to believe that Dan Wiansky did this? He's the only one who didn't. You won't even second a motion from Dan for the sake of allowing discussion of an idea you don't like. You cannot remove another commissioner. Face that fact. But the people can remove all of you.
Thank you, anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, going once, one twice. Okay, moving down to the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
Sean, also move.
Thank you, is there support?
Mrs. Money, I'll support.
Thank you, any roll call, please?
Wiansky.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
I have to abstain due to Matt Pleasant being part of a real estate transaction I'm part of.
Dennison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to schedule matters from the floor. Starting with Mr. Randy Bickard, bringing pickleball to Buchanan.
I guess, first of all, I am Randy Bickard, I am from the city, I've been here all my life. We live out at nine twenty-one Main, and I love this town. And would love to see pickleball courts in Buchanan as Niles has them, Niles Township, all the surrounding communities. So, what I did is I went out, as asked by you guys, and acquired quotes for different phases. You know, the asphalt, the fencing, the nets, and all of that stuff. And getting quotes for this stuff is like pulling teeth, it seems like. But I was able to get several quotes, and I have copies of all those that I can share with anybody that cares to see them. And some other parties have come to me and made me aware that the city owned a particular piece of property that I have listed on this piece of paper, and it is four oh one River Street. We all know that's the old Clark Equipment place, I think there's some leaves being stored there right now. But on the very back page of that, I kind of did a layout of where I thought the courts might go on there if this happens to be approved by you guys and/or the city. And once the location gets approved, because if I have to change locations, it changes all the quotes, because, you know, you have to lay base and all that stuff. But right now, there is base out there. They would pull most of that up and put down brand-new asphalt, so it'd last for many, many years. We would put fence surrounding the entire complex. They'd put acrylic down for the paint, the lines, so on and so forth. Basically, in a nutshell, one company wanted to do a lock, stock, and barrel that was Art Asphalt up in Benton Harbor. They were at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety bucks. If I kind of cherry-picked the other people that provided quotes, I think we could get it done for as little as eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. If I get some sort of approval, let us take this to vote, whatever, I can go out, there are several people that have been very, very helpful in where I can go for some funding ideas and things of that nature. But before I ask for any funding, obviously, the location has to be approved. And once that gets approved, then I would move forward, trying to find some funding. And then, if it's rejected for some reason, then I basically have to start all over from scratch, which hopefully, I got a few years to live, and I could do that. But so, but it just seems like this would be a place where some people would complain. There is a very distinct noise when you're playing pickleball, when the plastic ball hits the paddle. This location would be away from almost all the residents. It's close to McCarty's, and, you know, that's a place of business, so I don't think it would bother them other than maybe to come over and plan their lunch hour. But so, that's my proposal. Again, I have this information, I can send it via email, whatever you'd like. But I just wanted to get it out of there. And if, I don't know who might respond to me, but just send me an email saying, "Yep, it looks good, you know, I'd like to see some numbers." We can set up a meeting, I can come back and show you guys.
We're going to have to wait till we have a city manager.
I have a question for you, Randy.
Sure.
Did you run the location by the Barb at all yet?
I did not. I figured you guys probably had more control than them, I don't know.
So, we do, they have a five-year strategic plan, so I don't know where your location fits within that. I could say from my perspective, I wouldn't be a fan of that space, just because it's one of the very few industrial development sites we have in town for future use. But I do think we have a ton of green space in our existing park infrastructure. I'd hate to see you not pursue free money to put something quality back into Buchanan. I think a good place for you to start would be, though, to meet with Barb and get some ideas from them on location personally.
I did meet with them on one occasion.
I was there.
Wiansky was there.
You know, the thing about it is, it's a wonderful location. There's decisions that have to be made because there's some, there's restricted covenants on it, which are not restricted information, because that was released, that haven't been released yet. And there's some intimate business that's going on between the city manager and a corporation about that property. So, I would like to just delay this till the next meeting, so that we can bring this up again. Because as the representative from Barb, the only place, there's a couple of places that we could put it, but then you run into the very thing that you were thinking. You know, Ravage Park would be an ideal place, but it's right behind the apartment complex.
Right.
So, you'd have that ping, ping, ping.
Right.
You know, which is a national complaint against it. So, we can't really give you an answer tonight. But as a Barb, the Barb representative, you know, that would be the one place that we could put it. You know, that I would probably recommend that we did put it as a representative for Barb. But I would just move that we put this on the next agenda if we have a city manager.
Sure.
It's all if. If we have a city manager, we'll be able to give you a lot better idea, because he was in the middle of something with that property out there.
Okay.
Dan, I'll move to table this until the next meeting.
Till the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sean.
Is that property cleared for being a super fund? Because I remember twenty years ago...
Yeah, there's just some restricted covenants on it, Tom.
Yep, they've been lifted. Just need a second.
Second.
So, is there any, should I contact Rachel and let her know of my plans and show her the costs associated?
Rachel Plank, you mean?
Yeah.
Rachel's no longer around the Barb, she moved to Florida.
It's Wendy. She's the chair, she's also the clerk at the township.
Okay.
But if you pass along the information, I have, we have an admin assistant and Dan that also, we can send it. Their meeting is canceled for December, though.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't be until January is when they meet again.
Okay. I have your email, or we, if I would maybe just shoot you a reminder, maybe send me that information?
Send me an email too, because, you know, you've got mine.
Yep.
And I'll make sure, because we canceled the Barb meeting this month.
Yep.
And we will, we will put you on the January meeting for sure, but we'll put you on the next commission meeting too.
Okay.
Because Barb, you know, I mean, anything that Barb does has to go through us anyhow.
Gotcha, I understand. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a roll call?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, roll call.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yeah.
Whedon.
Yes.
Yes.
Caris.
Okay, moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards. I'm going to make a motion to postpone Chief of Police Harvey Burnett's request to allow him to do some more research. Anybody like to support my motion?
I'll support that.
Thank you, do we have a roll call, please?
Wiansky.
No.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yeah.
Whedon.
Yes.
Can I bring up one point about that?
Mm-hmm.
Am I not allowed to?
I would like to hear it.
I sent Tim Gannus the sub gross, the grant thing. I've given it to Richard several times, I did one request, but they pay for all of this stuff. You know, so I mean, if that's the reason why it was canceled, that was going to be the very first question I asked him anyhow. I know he's gotten a donation, but on the other hand, where's the other money coming from? And we're not doing any, we're not doing any grant writing, obviously. We're not doing any money. I mean, Mr. Bickard is going to kill it on this pickle. He's going to show us all how it's done.
We're on the police.
So, Dan, do you just, you want to request for that to be part of the conversation in the next meeting, then? So that he brings that information about the grant in addition to more details? Because Harvey, if I'm correct, you had another, did you receive your third quote?
Yeah, we did receive that.
Okay.
So, we're waiting on three quotes.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like, you know, I'm going to ask if there's been any grants written or any requests to anybody for any free money. We, you know, we complain about the marijuana, but we don't petition them for the money.
But when they present it at the next meeting, we can...
All right.
We can ask those questions.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to... Unfinished business, new business. Consider resolution two thousand and twenty-three point eleven thirty-two, a resolution, excuse me, to approve the addition of the Michigan Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System as an approved investment option.
I can give an update on that since I was there. I can give an update on that since I was there. Um, so basically what, I'm sorry, um, what this is, is a liquid, trying to think of the best way to put this. It's basically a high interest earning account, uh, ran by the state of Michigan, put together by treasurers across the state of Michigan that keeps our, our money liquid, um, for day-to-day transactions. Allows us to earn more interest, um, on top of our local options. So we're just approving, uh, the ability for Deb to make decisions to use that as a additional investment fund where she sees fit for other financial opportunity. So with that, I'll motion to approve twenty twenty-three, resolution twenty twenty-three dot eleven slash thirty-two.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can I roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Vianzki?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to item B, special meeting. Consider setting a special meeting for November twenty-sixth at six P M. To consider the employment status of the city manager.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth.
What'd I say?
Twenty-sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-ninth at six o'clock.
Why can't we do that right now?
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the setting a special meeting for November twenty-ninth at six P M.
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call please.
I can, anyone said discussion right now?
Dan, you want any discussion?
I don't understand why we can't just, we, um, bring the city manager back. In fact, I'll make a mo, there's a motion on the floor, but I'm gonna make a motion that we bring the city manager back.
We have a motion and we have support. Let's vote on the first motion.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yeah.
Whedon?
Yes.
Vianzki?
No.
Money?
Yes.
I so moved right now that we bring our city manager Ben Eldridge back to work so that we can get on with city business. We've been without him for three weeks. And most everything that I'm being told, I'm not doing any of the arithmetic or any of the math or any of the reading on this, but I'm being told pretty regular that the mayor really overstepped his bounds. And I just wanna make the motion like to see a second.
Dan, I'll make a second and I'll second because I believe that Dan has, in, in his position and the things that he's requested, regardless of our grants or not, I'm gonna second it so if there is further discussion that we can put that on the record.
Mm-hmm.
And we can still vote. And I, I think that was the request of the community and I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, Dan, I think the reason we're moving to have it on Wednesday is so we have the first opportunity as a commission to hear Ben's side of the story up to this point. I, I can only speak for myself, but I, I haven't had the chance to hear Ben's side of the story yet. All I've heard is what you've said and what's been relayed to from the attorneys.
There was absolutely nothing stopping you from calling him. Nothing. Nothing from any of you calling him. I did.
That's your choice.
No, it's discussion. Yeah, it's my choice. The thing about it is it's three weeks of this city operating without a city manager with pay, with benefits. No keys. They took his, you took his keys away from him. I don't have access to City Hall. So, you know, all I'm, I'm not gonna get excited about it. All I want is a vote. We reinstate the city manager immediately or we don't?
I don't have access to City Hall either.
I don't wanna hear the excuse that you don't hear. No one's side of it though. That's garbage and you know it. I don't even know why you said it.
Cause it's true.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
Yeah, you already have support.
I already have support. We just need roll call.
Dennison?
No.
Whedon?
No.
Vianzki?
Yes.
Money?
No.
Swam?
No.
Motion doesn't carry.
Okay, moving down to item C, consideration of a motion by the mayor to hold a special open meeting hearing to proceed on charges under the city code of conduct and ethics ordinance and city rules procedure for city commission meetings against Mr. Vianzki.
I'm not gonna resign.
During the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three public meeting of the Buchanan area recreation board, Mr. Vianzki addressed members of the public audience, which included African-American individuals using the phrases "you people" and "those people." This conduct resulted in the filing of a complaint with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, case number six thirty-five, eight thirty-one. This complaint is still under review by the Civil Rights Department, has harmed citizen relations with the city and caused the city to unnecessarily spend funds on attorney fees responding to the complaint.
How much are the fees?
Number two, I'm, I have the floor. I have the floor. On November third, twenty twenty-three, the city of Buchanan mayor sent to all city commission members by text message a six-page complaint made by city employees against the city manager. The mayor specifically instructed each commission member to keep the employee's complaint confidential and that the complaints would be investigated by the city attorney. Mr. Vianzki disregarded the confidentiality directive by producing the complaint to the city manager and releasing a copy or contents of the complaint to the public before an investigation could even be started. Although the employee complaints would be available to the public, release of the complaints before employees and the city manager could be interviewed risks impeding investigation of the complaints. The complaint has at least five allegations of misconduct against female employees. Mr. Vianzki's actions were acts of retaliation for the reporting of conduct in violation of the city's misconduct, harassment and discrimination policy. And this conduct also violates Michigan Civil Rights Act. Number three, after receiving an envelope containing written employee complaints on November third, twenty twenty-three against the city manager, I explained that the city had received multiple employee complaints from different city departments concerning the city manager. Without reading the complaints, Mr. Vianzki immediately stated to me that the complaints were just a bunch of retaliatory BS. This is a clear statement that Mr. Vianzki is completely not concerned with the investigation and if needed, resolution of employee concerns. Number four, on the morning of November eighth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Vianzki entered City Hall office and confronted city bookkeeper Courtney Bam and clerk Cala Langston over their involvement in the employee complaints filed against the city manager. The employee complaint contains allegations of misconduct against female employees. This incident was reported to the Marion County Sheriff's Department where the incident is being investigated. Mr. Vianzki's actions were acts of retaliation for the reporting of conduct in violation of the city's misconduct, harassment and discrimination policy. This conduct also violates Michigan Civil Rights Act. These charges are filed against Commissioner Vianzki under the city's rules of procedure for city commission meetings and code of conduct and ethics ordinance. Depending on the factual findings of the commission, if support is found for one or more of the above charges, the city council may take one or a combination of the following actions. Number one, accept and vote whether or not to adopt a resolution of censure. Number two, if two or more independent findings of misconduct in office are found based on the above charges, vote whether or not to adopt a resolution of censure that includes a request for the commissioner's resignation from office. Number three, take a commission vote on a resolution requesting Commissioner Vianzki to resign from his position as a city commissioner. If Commissioner Vianzki refuses to resign after a request for resignation from office, the commission may take up any legal action necessary to terminate the commissioner's right to remain a seated city commissioner, including a resolution for the filing of charges with the governor of the state of Michigan requesting an action for the removal of the commissioner from office under M C L one sixty-eight, three two seven. I don't do this half-heartedly and I don't take it lightly. I know that, um, what I'm asking is not easy, but it's become extremely clear to me, um, that Commissioner Vianzki is a detriment to the city and is holding us back from doing real work. And, um, I would take a motion.
So I'll move to approve to hold a special open meeting hearing to proceed with charges under the city code of conduct and ethics ordinance, city rules of procedure for city commission meetings against Commissioner Dan Vianzki.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call please?
Whedon?
You got discussion. There's discussion. Are you kidding me?
Sure, go ahead.
Wow. Number four is an out and out lie. It's every working person's worst nightmare when an employee turns.
I don't think he gets to speak until the open hearing on this actually. I think that is your, your opportunity.
No, you made a motion. You've got four accusations against me.
But when, when the commission is, um,
Do whatever you gotta do.
Voting on pressing charges.
You put your story together really well, so when you talk to Whitmer, you know what you're saying. Because you're not gonna go anywhere on this.
You'll get a chance to talk.
Fifteen minutes.
I'm not resigning, so forget it. You're not gonna scare me off.
Can we have roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Vianzki?
I don't get to vote in this because it's accusations against me.
He doesn't.
You do get to vote in.
I'm not voting yes. I'm voting no.
Thank you. Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, down to item D under new business. Um, um, so after our, our special meeting late last week where we decided on, uh, the options for the infrastructure project downtown, um, Mike from Pryna Newhoff is, uh, working on redoing those drawings and getting it ready to s- submit paperwork for the M dot project. It has to be turned in by the fifteenth. He emailed me this weekend, um, stated that he wasn't sure what the situation was with the city manager, but that he may have M dot documents that need to be signed and asked that the commission make a motion to let me sign them uh, if there is still no city manager, active city manager. So that's what that is about.
We don't have a city manager because you suspended him. I mean, it's that simple.
It is.
And I'm not gonna give you any, any.
Anybody like to make a motion?
No.
I'll motion to approve Mayor Sean Dennison to sign any M dot documents pertaining to the infrastructure project in the absence of the city manager. My request, once those are signed, that he forward them to the remaining board members.
This is money I'll support there.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Vianzki?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to, I don't, we don't have any communications. Moving down to public comment and non-agenda items. Anyone wish to make a public comment?
So you guys just voted to have a hearing against me?
Hey, just like to make comment Chief Harvey Burnett with the Buchanan Police Department. And I want to let everybody know that this upcoming Saturday at seven forty-five, we will be having shop with a cop at the Niles Walmart. Um, we are very gracious for our local businesses and private persons who have donated to help uh, make this a success this year. Uh, we're gonna be taking about twenty of our young kids from Buchanan Community Schools uh, out to Walmart with us. They get two hundred dollars to be able to spend for Christmas on themselves and, um, their families and things like that. Um, the Scarecrow Charities, uh, Honor Credit Union and so many others are, have been instrumental in helping us to make this a success. So this Saturday, seven forty-five in the morning, we'll be doing shop with a cop with the kids. Right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Uh, Jerry Flinner, uh, chairman of the McCoy Creek Trail Group. After last, um, last city commission meeting, I had several complaints that I read that city money was being spent on the trail. That is absolutely not true. He has done a wonderful job in getting grants for us. We're almost at the two million dollar level. Locally, we raised over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There is not a dime of the city money being spent on the trail. FYI. I hope those people here hear that. And I support Sean.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Uh, Richard Martin, uh, nine twenty Chippewa. That's in Buchanan. Uh, I attended the, um, parade and the Christmas tree lighting ceremony the other day. And I just wanted to mention that it was wonderful. Um, and there, there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people down there. Some kids that I saw that just couldn't believe they were gonna be able to see Santa Claus. And I'm not certain what organizations, I, I know the Chamber of Commerce was involved a lot. I don't know about the city. Uh, but I just wanna say, even without a manager, I thought the night went well and I was real proud of that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Could you end it faster?
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Whedon?
I, I just thank everybody for coming out. Uh, when we, Sean and I joined this adventure five years ago, uh, you know, you can never anticipate, I think, a night like this where we have such a room divided on, and opinions and, and perspectives and, and I think ultimately we all desire, uh, for Buchanan to be exactly what it's always been. A home to each and every one of us. Uh, we attempt as much as we can to be as kind and thoughtful to every person that comes, uh, before us. I think Buchanan does it better than anybody. I really do. Uh, Richard, I, I think you pointed out something that is just a very small portion of things that we need to be excited about in this city. Uh, I plead, take a moment and, and, and start to think about what you share, what you talk about and how you act. It doesn't mean that what you're saying doesn't have value and that it may not be accurate and it may not be. But the bottom line is, is that we have one of the most beautiful cities in southwest Michigan. We have some of the most exciting things happening within our city. And all I ask of you is to take a moment and start to spread that love and start to share the exciting things that are happening in our city. In addition to your opinions that may differ from others, but please remember so many things and so many people are putting so much money and so much time and so much effort to make this the city that we love and that honestly many other people love, and that's why they wanna come here. And I wanna see that continue in the midst of us having difficult times with personnel, with staff, with finances and so much more. Uh, it doesn't mean that we sweep it under the rug and we forget about it, but it does mean that we can't forget these things that made us, uh, care this much, the reason that you're here tonight. So, uh, I just wanna say thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Swam?
Uh, first, thank you to John Leonard for your service. It's been great to know you all these years and wishing you the best on what's next to come with the goats. Uh, Richard hit a, Richard hit on it, but I add in my notes to have a big thank you to everybody involved, all the merchants, uh, that participated downtown, all of the community members that showed up. Uh, the Buchanan Chamber of Commerce and members of City Hall that helped put Bucktown Christmas together. It was a wonderful event, beautiful event, really represents the passion that this community has for each other and why it's great to, to live here and be here. So, thank you. Um, apologize, I'm hoarse tonight, but, and lastly, you know, our, our motion on Dan tonight, you know, it, as Sean stated, it's not taken lightly. Um, it, it's done because, you know, we don't want our staff to dread coming to work because somebody's gonna come down here and do whatever or any of those other allegations that don't represent this community for what it is that we're being accused of. Uh, a, a civil rights, uh, allegation is a serious complaint that we need to take seriously, much like the other allegations and we need to get the truth, just like we're committed to getting. Um, hence the investigation process. So, you know, I believe Dan's gonna have his chance to speak to those allegations as he deserves. And that's what we motioned on tonight was for him to have that opportunity to speak out about why he's being accused of these things and if it is becoming of a commissioner. And that's it. He hasn't been found guilty of anything yet. It's his chance to talk at his hearing. So I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know it's not a, um, a fun topic once again, but thank you for coming out. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vianzki?
First, before I get started in the serious stuff, um, the library's having their phase three construction. They need five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, finish their second floor. This is serious stuff. They raise their own money. And the trail, Jerry, I have never said nothing bad about the trail, ever, ever. I know you do it on your own. I know that. Um, the allegations, as I started to say before, this is every working person's worst nightmare number four here. A sexual harassment. I came in here as a city commissioner, which I have that right to walk into this building as, but I can't anymore because the codes were changed, because they're playing at character assassination. That's all this is. Cold, simple. Am I the easiest guy to get along with? No. But so what? That's my right. It's my first amendment right. Mr. Busby is in here tonight and I see there's a case number, but I don't believe there's probably been any attorney money spent on this case number because I haven't received a copy of this case number. Mr. and Buzz, Mr. Busby and I got into a pretty serious verbal disagreement. And he held his ground, but I held mine. And I appreciate you for that and I respect you for that, sir. Well, the police department was contacted. I talked to the sheriff's department. There's no case with the sheriff's department. With the sexual harassment, there's no case because I contacted the sheriff's department. I walked down here, I got my mail, I got a phone number and Callie come out of her office like a banji. I stepped into the office I was in and closed the door because I didn't wanna listen to her because I know how to deal with people like that and they don't usually like the way I deal with them. So to make my exit, I had to walk past her. She's the one that's been releasing all the confidential information. She's the one that's put the fear of God in the employees. She's the one that thinks, tries to make all the employees think they're gonna lose their jobs. And if you think she's a great clerk, you ought to really think about it real, real hard. As far as the other management, this is a mutiny. As far as your other management, this is a mutiny beyond mutinies. And usually you hang the mutineers, you don't hang the captain, no matter how many mutineers you have to hang, you hang the mutineers. This was all management, this is Rich Murphy, Ashley Regal, Bernie, Burnett, Harvey, Harvey, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Harvey, Harvey Burnett, Tim Gannus, and Mike Baker. And none of their names are on the complaints, but there was forty-two of them originally. And then when they were given to me, I did call them bullshit, because that's what they are, they're bullshit. They have forty-two complaints by employees complaining about having to do their jobs, being made to do what every employee's supposed to do, punch the clock and save money. The one thing that Ben is guilty of is allowing too much horseplay in this office and participating in it by trying to get to know the people. The police department is complaining about being short-staffed, you have two chief of polices. Why do we have two chief of polices? This commission allowed it, this commission has allowed everything that's gone on down here. So when they cry about losing multiple employees, because the city manager comes in here and decides to clean house, because his managers aren't backing him up, you cannot do anything else, otherwise you'll have chaos. And the fact that the state's gonna come in, it's going to happen, people, no matter what he says. And whether you get rid of me or not, the people I just named, the state will get rid of, because they'll see how unproductive they are when they come in. So that's my five minutes, don't expect me to show up at your stupid hearing, contact the governor.
Mr. Money?
Uh, first off, I wanna thank everybody for being here once again. Uh, congratulations to John Leonard for that twenty-three years of service for, uh, that you've worked so hard for in Buchanan, really appreciate it. Thank you for your other service in the Marine Corps, I don't know if it's, uh, the O-Rah or the Who-Rah thing, but whatever it is, you know, congratulations with that, John.
He just needs some crayons, that's.
Yeah, yeah, he eats crayons, so, um... Also, I wanna, uh, give a big shout out to the, uh, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and all the people that were involved in the, uh, parade Saturday. I was kinda fortunate, and I had a, kinda like a bird's eye view of the thing, and it was, it was a tremendous outing. Uh, like Rich Martin said, uh, there was a great turnout, a lot of kids on the street, a lot of adults, a lot of parents, um, and, uh, it was just, it was just a, uh, a remarkable turnout, and once again, thank you for the city of Buchanan, uh, for all of their efforts to make it once again, you know, a, a great, a great event, so that's all I have. Well, one more thing, uh, I always wanna say thank you to this commission, one and all, because we all do such a good job.
Thank you. Um... This past week, um, someone texted me an interesting, um, an article, it, it is actually regarding, um, the things that are going on at Michigan State University right now with Mel Tucker and, um, the board at Michigan State, but there was an interesting comment from the athletic director, and I think that it's, um, it couldn't be more fitting for where we're sitting right now. It says, "Best practices in investigations call for privacy in order to not influence outcomes. Privacy is also key to creating a culture around reporting incidents. We must create a safe environment for all individuals to come forward without a fear of institutional retaliation or dissemination of information regarding highly personal matters." I can't say it any better than that. Wednesday night, we will have an open hearing, um... Unfortunately, I think any privacy is going out the window, I think Commissioner Vianzki has pushed us past, uh, allowing any kind of, um, secrecy or confidentiality, so um, Wednesday night at six, we will be here to discuss, um, how to move forward with, uh, our city manager, and figure out a way to keep the city moving forward. So I look forward to seeing you all then, thank you very much for coming, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
Money, I'll support.
Can we roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Vianzki?
Yes.
You're adjourned.
Be careful out there.
What do you, what do you, what don't you understand?
Oh, man, it is. I, uh, I live on Turo, but I came down, you know how to make, and I kept on of that, you know? Yeah, yeah, nice to meet you, good seeing you again, Dave, I'm sorry, not nice to meet you, it's always nice to meet you.
About why I wanna have a special hearing to hear what Mr. Vianzki's done, is that? Yes? Yeah, we can do that, it's gonna go in our minutes anyway, so, I can have Callis in that out, if you'd like.